Yeah.
He's been in the process.
Is there a rate number seven hours?
No, we're not. If so, we're.
Folks, hey folks, good evening. Tonight, uh, we're live streaming again on YouTube. I'm making that announcement. I am attempting to comply with resolution of this board, much to my disappointment and how I can and what I can accomplish with that, I will certainly do so. But um, I've seen no designated areas, et cetera, and having a brief discussion with our solicitor, I'll make every effort to comply and um, you know, keep the people of Robinson County informed as best as possible. Thank you.
My allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the reading of justice for all.
Thank you.
Paul, Mr. Joe.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
Here.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
I'm here. I turn the meeting over to Solicitor Lado for the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. This is a public hearing concerning proposed ordinance twenty-four dash oh one regarding amending the code of ordinances concerning the police deferred retirement option program to change the designated eligibility age from fifty-five to fifty-two and a half. A public hearing last month that was continued. It was also re-advertised by the township manager. And that'll be our first order of business is to add the proof of publication of as exhibit B five of evidencing the fact that the notice of public hearing was re-advertised on March the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. Is there any member of the public here that wishes to make any public comment or have any input with regard to the board's consideration of this ordinance? On the record, reflected, no one's indicating any uh, desire to do that. Anything from the board?
We received that letter or communication.
I'm sorry?
Did we receive any letters or private communication?
Yeah, I believe it's.
That's a reference to the union. Yes, sir. We did. That was passed on to our solicitor.
So um, if the board has nothing and there's no public comment, I will, before you close the public hearing and reopen the public meeting, I'll announce that the board does intend to consider this ordinance if it reconvenes its public meeting and it does intend to adopt the same ordinance. So stay tuned. You'll have the opportunity to make one other comment if you wish. And with that, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'll make sure that uh, our manager has the original hearing exhibits, boards one through five. And I will, I would suggest that the board sign several of these so that Rich has enough. I'm gonna hand to Joy four copies of those when you're doing or when you're considering. And with that, I believe I can, uh, the board can uh, adjourn the public hearing and reconvene your regular meeting.
Okay, thank you, Solicitor. Um, I don't know, I don't really make a motion for that now or you wanna wait till the solicitor, part of the meeting? Yeah?
I'll, I'll make a motion, be that first, for the amendment of the.
Ordinance twenty-four dash oh one.
Ordinance twenty-four dash oh one.
All right, we have a motion. You have second?
I'll say it.
We'll call Mr. Joe. Yes, Mr. Caldwell, Mr. Rhodes.
Yeah.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
All right, any citizens concerned? Do we have?
Name, the manager's.
Robert Caldwell, fourteen twenty-nine, Old River Road. First of all, I missed the last meeting. I watched it on YouTube. Thank you. I enjoyed it. Second of all, the sewer on our. I, I have no idea what you guys are doing about it.
I can quick answer that. You can come to the meeting on Monday because our engineer, our municipal authority engineer, they're gonna go through everything for you, what their plan is, they're gonna televise the lines, what they're finding, not finding, and answer all your questions on Monday.
Well, they can't televise it.
Well, but he will, Keith Scholwold will update you and so will our.
Because you know, you got an eight-inch pipe with solid fresh water going down there.
Well, like I said, the answer will be better on Monday because our engineer and our maintenance guy for the plant have a plan and they're gonna work on it.
Well, in lieu of, in lieu of answers, is there anything we can give, you know, as well as information now, necessarily answers? I mean, I've, I've been out watching. They're all sewage.
Well, if Rich has something that's.
I can give you a very broad one. I received it and we get late yesterday, early this morning. We've had some IT issues. So things have not been flowing while coming into the office. We're going back out. What I'll share with you is that they have done a lot of televising. We do know that there's quite a lot of water that's infiltrating the lines at different locations, mostly up in what we believe to be the Cypress and Killian area. Uh, much of that may be due to what is known as VTC piping. If you're not familiar with that, those in the audience, that is actually ceramic piping versus PVC piping, which most of the lines made from. So that, that ceramic piping may, may in fact, uh, not seat very well together. Uh, that was a requirement by Norfolk Southern to do so. So with that, what they're looking to do is to line those pipes to prevent water infiltration from occurring. So they're looking through the solutions right now. That's where most of it, we believe, again, is coming from. They're continuing to do that. There have been some points where the, that the camera has actually been underwater uh, because there is a lot of eye and eye in the line. Uh, we did actually have to dig, I, I thank my public works department. Uh, they went out and actually had to find a couple of manholes, actually had to dig into the street to do that uh, under probably about fifteen years of paving. Uh, so quite a lot of work's been done. Uh, again, this is really the RTMA. Uh, so I would ask that you come back on Monday because I think Keith will have more of a wrap-up for you on Monday, but I try to give you at least a synopsis of what they have found so far.
So you're gonna tell the township residents that they'll pay out of pocket for clean out for their sewer because of your negligence of cleaning it?
So again, that's something you'll have to address with the RTMA versus with township or supervisors. So it's the Robinson Township Municipal Authority that has the oversight with regard to the public sewer.
My only comment to that before we move on, man, is that, you know, the fact that we don't, we have to struggle to find our manholes, you know, to me leads that we're just not prepared for these situations. I had an opportunity prior to our previous manager's passing, I had an opportunity to uh, take a little drive through with him and show him some of the ones that, you know, are six inches under dirt. So to me, I just don't believe we're prepared. I don't think we've maintained our infrastructure. For those of you who don't know where our sewer plant is, I encourage you to take a drive down. It's not easy to turn around. I encourage you to take a drive down and take a look at that and um, formulate your own opinion.
Well, I mean, I'm just getting a little bit. There are some people that have paid, you know, three hundred a pop cleaning sewers out three, four times in the past four or five years. Now to come to find out that it was the negligence of the township for not keeping up with the sewage, you know? They didn't know. They know now.
Name, manager's.
My name's Nam Reider. I live at thirteen forty-five Old River Road. I understand what you're saying. I comprehend your answers to Bobby. However, currently, at this particular moment, my basement is full of sewage and my insurance company will not have it cleaned out until I can get that fixed. That is a health hazard. I mean, like, I'm in a situation that is not my fault at all. And I have no idea, no idea what to do about it. And, you know, I came down and talked to you. I hear what you're saying, but this is very serious. I can't have a basement full of sewage. I cannot have my house smelling the way my house smells right now. It's disgusting and it's vile. And I'm not gonna put money out of my pocket. That's not fair. I mean, if I have to, I will, of course, but that is not fair at all. And I just want that on the record and I'm going to be able to set it because I'm very, very upset.
You know, and I would ask you to also come back during Monday's meeting. I know we had a chance to talk to you earlier today and I, I gave you what I could. Uh, I, I know it's, it wasn't the, the, what you'd like to have at the moment, but again, I want you to come back on Monday night because that's really where it needs to go so that they are aware of the issues and concerns and can address those. And I have to, I did forward along the information you gave me, the picture you gave me.
My pictures?
Yes, I did, ma'am. So they've been forwarded to the proper, to their uh, SEO uh, and also to the operator down here at the plant. So I'm hoping they're gonna contact you in the next day or two. I know that part of us, they were televising lines to see where to find the issue.
And I did see them. I, actually, the day after I spoke to you, I went out my front door and I saw that. So I was happy to see action. But having a basement full of sewage of no negligence of my own and not being able to clean it up is extremely, extremely upsetting. And now we're gonna get rain. I got nothing to look forward to, but basically more in my basement. So what time is the meeting on Monday?
It is seven PM.
Seven PM and it's here?
It will be here yes, ma'am.
I'll be here.
Any other citizens concerned?
I will have a question. I mean, I have a, a, a question. Are you gonna forward all these complaints that you're getting and you're forwarding on to the sewer authority, to the sewer authority? So we can be, be better prepared for it?
The RTMA has decided to proceed anything for the engineer. So the engineer gets it directly?
No, we, I haven't heard anything about these complaints.
Alright, so I'm giving it to the engineer and to the plant operator. So they should be informing you directly as a member of the RTMA.
We haven't gotten anything.
Okay, I will follow up with them and make sure that they, they forward all those things on.
Because how can we fix a problem we don't know about? The walk in here, we'll be sitting here like, all the information.
Thank you. I was not aware that was happening.
What's happening to us because we're sitting here with problems we didn't create, but they exist.
Yeah, but you're getting the calls. If he's not giving you the information that's between, what do you have?
I know he's giving us the information, but he's also telling you he's forwarded to people who are in charge of the RTMA and engineer.
That they're responsible for conducting the operations together. So I will follow up with Mr. Scholwold and I'll follow up with our plant manager, Dante, and, and get that fixed. The plant operator. Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. I have one other quick question. When we spoke the other day, you and I, you said about taking that vent cap off, out front?
Yeah, I mentioned to you that that's what had, uh, that had been recommended by Gray Brown.
Correct.
To, to have that vent cap that allowed the water to flow out rather than into the basement. So again, I would follow up with him to, to see where he has his, he can give.
I didn't know I well water. So that's a good idea.
Right, yeah. Yeah, because that actually pushes it out before it gets into the basement. So that was just a recommendation. Again, I would talk, talk to Gray Brown because he knows, he'll know better what to, what to do.
I am physically not capable of bringing that. I, I tried.
Okay.
With a screwdriver. I mean, I can't.
Alright. Gentlemen live nearby that could potentially help, ma'am, with that, that'd be wonderful. Alright, thanks, sir.
Good evening. My name's Keith Mooney. For those of you who don't know me, um, I represent the developer of Green Hills Estates. I'm here this evening to hopefully uh, see if we can't get this matter moving forward a little bit. Um, I've been working with Mr. Orlando and Mr. Rhodes to finalize the final agreement so that we can get the plans released for recording. We have the pump and haul agreement, which we just need you guys to sign off on so that Roma City Township Municipal Authority can submit the pump and haul agreement. For those of you who don't understand what the pump and haul agreement is, is our, we're building a packaged sewage treatment plant on our property. That plant will take care of our sewer needs and if we can work out the proper agreements with the municipal authority, you have some failing systems, it will end up taking care of those failing systems need. But in order for that plant to function properly, it needs a minimum amount of sewage to flow into it. So it needs the first twenty-two homes to be constructed and flowing sewer before that plant will operate correctly. So we've already gotten approval from Pay-Deb for the agreement. We need the municipality and we need the municipal authority to sign off on the pump and haul agreement wherein the wet well that's built for that sewage treatment plant will operate as a holding tank. It will get pumped, what is it, twice a week or three times a week?
It's gotta be every three days.
So it will get pumped and then that sewage actually will go to Westchester. It'll get trucked down to Westchester. And that's part of the pump and haul agreement that we submitted to you. We've submitted the hauler agreement that we already had in place as well. So that's that agreement. And then the other agreements are your standard agreement. And your municipal improvements agreement that your solicitor has already drafted and your stormwater agreement that your municipal solicitor has already drafted, as well as he has approved the form of bond. I still believe, I think, a form of bond. He tweaked it. Um, your engineer has approved the amount for the municipal improvements agreement. So we're at the point where we're asking you to put those on the agenda at your next meeting so that you can approve them for execution so that we can start settling lots. Well, I mean, we're at the point, I mean, you guys graciously, about a year and a half ago, two years ago, entered into agreement with us to allow us to start doing the grading and earth moving and stuff. We're finished all that. So Ryan Holmes, once we, once we get the plan recorded, Ryan Holmes wants to get in there and they wanna start building homes and bring in some more taxable property into your municipality. So that's where we're at. And we're just asking that you put it on the agenda for your next meeting.
Yeah, because I'm watching all municipal authority meetings on Monday, so I'm not, it's gonna hopefully be finalized then.
You need to get signed agreements to us so they can approve. I'm not gonna sign it before you do.
Well, I, I know, but they, I, I just want them to put it on their agendas. Right now, they haven't authorized the execution of the agreements. I just, I mean, I, we'd be signing agreements in a week. We're just waiting for the, the bond to come back, right?
They need a bond in two days.
Well.
It's not a big bond. It's only about eight hundred thousand, right?
Correct. Yeah. That's gonna be on, on, tend to Monday.
I guess.
But before they sign them, they're, the, the way this board works, I'm just telling you. You, you and I are done, but we don't have signed agreements from you. So get those signed, get three copies as I suggested in my email, make sure they're here. And I don't see any reason why the board would not look at them, but this board likes to look at stuff in advance. So if you get on time.
But the, the agreements are drafted. I mean, you, you can give them the agreements.
I sent copies. They have copies of the draft.
I mean, by, I mean, Joe's signature is not gonna change the wording of the documents. So if they have questions, we're asking that they look at it now so that they can, we can answer them at that next meeting and they can execute the agreement if they're satisfied.
Is Monday the sewer authority or the?
Sewer authority.
Sewer.
Monday's too. If we be there on Monday, then that'll.
Yeah, and just, just to explain.
We don't have to go back to the sewer authority. The sewer authority at their last meeting approved the execution of the documents when their engineer and their, their solicitor were satisfied with it. So I got an email from Joe and I think you've seen the same email where she expects to have documents ready for signature on Monday. But we, I don't believe we need to go back given the action that they've taken at their last meeting.
We probably don't like to go, but we could, this could be on the agenda Tuesday. We just have.
Yeah.
Can we add this to the agenda?
Okay.
Just Monday, she'll hopefully, everything, Joe will follow and make sure it's good and we're done.
Just so everybody knows about the pump and haul agreement, that is DEP required. That has nothing to do with our design or anything, but that, that, your Act five thirty-seven was amended for this regional sewer plant. We went and go, uh, went to DEP and got the permit. And within the permit from DEP, we have to wait for twenty-two homes and we have to pump and haul in the meantime. So it, it, I mean, and, and it'll solve a big problem for you guys when we get, um, legislature on there. Because you are on DEP's radar for that.
Mr. Mooney and Mr. Orlando, are we referring to the improvement and performance bond? I'm looking at some emails dated April ninth and April eleventh. This is, this is what we're looking at.
So that, what I, what I can see in, that's in your hand, looks like the cost estimate. So that cost estimate is eight hundred whatever thousand dollars it is. We have to provide security for the improvements that make up that eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which we're in a position to do.
Right. What, what my, what my position is, just so we're all clear, is I, I don't like to sign things that I haven't written. And I detect in your voice just a slight bit of frustration or maybe not frustration, hoax to get things going as quickly as possible. And I don't, I don't disagree with that. But what I'm saying is, I'm not gonna sign anything I feel that I haven't had a chance to read. What my colleagues do, it's their business.
And, and I understand that. And, and why you sense frustration in my voices? Mr. Orlando had drafted these agreements out over a month and a half ago. My colleague came to your meeting last month. Obviously, we reviewed the drafts, Mr. Orlando reviewed the drafts, and I heard that you guys hadn't seen them. But I, I don't know what else we can do as the developer to get them in your hands if your staff not put them in your hands.
You were suggesting that's our problem with respect to either our manager or solicitor or engineer, somebody getting these to me. You're suggesting that's our problem.
I mean, unless you wanna give me your email address and have me emailing to you, I mean, your staff has everything that we were supposed to provide and has had it, and you're saying nobody's provided it to you.
Well, I'm not saying nobody's provided it, but when you say, when you say, Mr. Mooney, that somebody tweaked it with our solicitor, I've seen this township suffer uh, from tweaks and I'd like to read that. That's all I'm saying.
When I say somebody tweaked it, your solicitor tweaked it.
Okay, and, and no disrespect to our solicitor, I still wanna see that.
Well, regardless.
In all this, and how you want me to get it to you. I mean, I've done your.
Regardless, you're on the agenda on Tuesday. The municipal authority's on Monday and most likely you'll get what you need on Tuesday, but that should be, that's it.
I mean, if you, if you wanna give me your email address, I'll email it to you tonight while you're doing it.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mooney, I've indicated that they may, in the future, put in the other, uh, part of the plant for uh, the failed systems up there. As far as I know, DEP's requirement is not admissible. Within five years of them starting that plant, those people have to be hooked up. So if, I'm gonna make sure that that agreement is clear, that they are putting in the rest of that plant.
The, the um, SBI has been advised by the sewer authority to go ahead and start designing the new practice system nine five sixty-eight to hook into the plant. Until that is approved um, by DEP, they cannot commit to hooking into. We, I have already arranged and provided all of the fees that will go for the second train. And I already have that um, proposal from Gailing, who's doing the first train for my subdivision, um, available. Um, and that, from the time the sewer authority says, we're ready, it'll take about five months to get that installed and they can hook up.
Okay, that was, the, the issue was, he indicated that you, you may not do this at all?
No, no. What, what I was indicating is, is we haven't worked out the, the paperwork.
Okay.
To do it. I mean, I, I assume you guys wanna do it, but obviously, we gotta get some agreements together for that part of it.
And that's still a year away from what I understand for being done.
I know you, I know that your coworker, okay, was here and whatever issues we had, we laid them out. Nobody pulled any punches. Nobody gave you any grief. So it's more like Gene's giving it to us. Like Chris said, you have them on Monday. As long as we have our paperwork on Tuesday, we should be.
We're on the agenda Tuesday and.
Yeah, we should be fine. So it's just.
They're not gonna sign it before you do, though.
I, I'm not asking them to sign it. I'm just asking them to approve the execution. I mean, I, I mean, I, I, I'm in the catch twenty-two because I can't get on the agenda.
You, we don't have a problem putting you on the agenda. You already did that, Rich, right? Yes, since you're covered.
Rich, are you in on Monday?
Hmm, I am in on Monday.
Okay, I have actually delivered the signed agreements. I cannot get my bond until you approve the agreements. It's sort of a catch twenty-two. So you'll have a signed agreement from me, actually, you know, where I signed with the stormwater management. We've already delivered our plans for signature.
So worst case scenario you're telling us is that we could agree to all this with the provision that you get your bond.
Yes.
Okay, and that way, everybody, everybody's gonna be happy because you.
I understand that you need the agreements approved, but we're not gonna release those agreements until we have one. And they're not gonna sign them until you sign them. So if you get us signed agreements on Tuesday, they might very well sign them. And then we'll hold them until you bring the bond in.
If you would do me a favor, specifically send to me tomorrow morning, if you can, exactly how you want me to list this on the agenda for this Tuesday. What you wanna have on there and I will make sure it's on there, okay?
We'll do that.
And sir, if you will deliver those agreements to me, that would be perfect. I'll let you know the package.
Okay.
We will do that. And then next one.
I'm surprised that you say, with the condition that the bond's approved.
Well, that, that, I will put, I will put that in my email to you, to your manager.
That's great.
Because that's only, that's only for, I mean.
Well, yeah.
I, I do what Mr. Orlando does in four other places. So I, I, I wouldn't ask anything of you that I wouldn't ask of any of the municipalities I represent.
Right. And, and I know that. We, you know, we get it. This is normal, hell. Okay, I, I, I wear it how long? I saw it on the board the last time. So I, I understand. We'll take your.
Alright, so I'll just give you that and then we'll do it.
Perfect.
I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rich Correspondent.
A piece of correspondence really has this P, uh, P A D P, local municipality involvement process. I also passed that to your mail. Uh, it is in your box. One of those was uh, from uh, our, our friends at David Mascarino. Their plant down the road is hosting an open house and that was, that, that's the invitation to you. I'll send you, you will also come myself from there. That's it.
Okay. All right, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, board presidents. First item I have on my agenda tonight is a preview of the LSA grant. Probably those of you recall, a lot of part of twenty twenty-three, I applied for a grant through the local share account. It's a grant from the PA gaining money that's available. Competitive grant in Pennsylvania. Um, it's broken down by counties and uh, Perks County had a one point two five million budget for that grant. They ended up increasing that for the awards to two point four million. And I also found out that nine point six million in funds were applied for. That's just Perks County. Um, during the grant process, you also probably recall the board members that were on the board last year. We had to call a special meeting, which the board graciously did for me in order to adopt the resolution relative to this grant. That was uh, in September as well. Recently found out, um, thanks, we had support, I should mention as well. We had support from Senator Scott Martin and also Representative Mark Gillon for this grant. Okay, so uh, that helped. But we applied for a hundred eighty thousand, five hundred dollars. And I was notified that we received the full amount, which is fantastic. This grant was for police cars to get our fleet where it needed to be without taxing our, actually our taxpayers and also burdening, you know, township and township budget. Um, so I went to work. Once I found out that we received this grant and I was able to locate two twenty twenty-three Ford Interceptor leftovers, okay? The reason I looked for the rather the Ford Interceptors was because of the cost increase of the new vehicles for twenty twenty-four. It actually would have put us well above that hundred eighty thousand, five hundred, okay? So in a nutshell, finding the leftovers saved us a little over twelve thousand dollars. So the breakdown of two vehicles, um, purchase price of the vehicles are thirty-eight, four eight nine, thirty thousand, four hundred eighty-nine dollars. That's on the Co-Stars. The upping cost for both vehicles is fifteen thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars, likewise Co-Stars. And the decal, of course, is eight hundred dollars. The total for each vehicle is fifty-four thousand, six hundred and three dollars. Add them together, we have a grand total of a hundred nine thousand, two hundred and six. Our grant, as I stated, was a hundred eighty thousand, five fifty, actually. So we have a deficit of six hundred and fifty-six dollars. So basically, we're getting two blue cars ready to hit the street for six hundred fifty-six dollars. Now, if you recall, I had budgeted under my capital purchase nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars for a lease for a vehicle. That was an event that we did not pick a grant. I didn't wanna tax the budget for the vehicle. But if I got us one, that'd be just a step of getting to where we needed to be. So with that nineteen thousand, obviously, we can cover that six hundred fifty-six dollars. Would also be rude of me if I didn't mention to you that we also will need to create two lines for maintenance for these vehicles. And that would be an additional three thousand dollars. So in turn, once you subtract all that from what I do have in that four ten eight hundred, which is capital purchase major, we're in agreement by fifteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars. Uh, the dealership, which is Cop thirty-three, um, they are holding those vehicles for me on my word. I didn't have to obviously reach out to you to have some money sent to them. Um, so I had to get back to them on that. I did reach out to the grant administrator, which is the PA Department of Community and Economic Development. I got in writing from them that it's good to move forward with the purchase because the grant is approved. Um, what my, and I spoke with Rich and also Sheila, what the recommendation would be, since the grant money, once it's reimbursed to cover our invoices, that we said it then would come back into our general account. At this point, if the board would consider making a motion to move forward with this purchase out of our general fund. And then, of course, once the grant comes back, it replenishes that. So I just wanted to bring all the facts up to you so you had it in front of you. I also provided you um, all with the spreadsheet and email. I also provided you um all with the spreadsheet and email, outlining what I just went over, if you didn't receive it, let me know, I'll be more than happy to send it to you as well.
Do that, with that motion now?
It's entirely up to the board.
Anyone like to make that motion now?
I'll make a motion to move forward with purchasing the uh two police interceptors out of the grant.
My second one, will call Mr. Joy, Mr. Gollum, Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hitler?
Yes.
I'll go, yes.
Thank you, Board, and also thank you for, you know, your work and working with me last year. You know, again, I'm very apologetic for you having to take more time out of your life to have a special meeting to draft that resolution. And I appreciate it, and obviously, it came back for us, so I'm happy to say that, but thank you. Mr. Steve, too, you were supervisor back then, so thank you. Second item I have is uh I wanted to discuss AED replacements. Um our AEDs, we need two AEDs for our department. Um we have several AEDs that are not functioning. Uh we reached out and tried to obtain different sources that we could possibly get donated like we did initially. They're just not donating anymore, a lot of them came from the Red Hospital last time. I actually had a more detailed agenda set up initially than I, I actually pulled back a little bit, because Scott had reached out to me, and he went to work trying to find us a better deal. And uh came close, but not quite. Um so in essence, what I'm gonna be asking for Tuesday is the motion for me to purchase two AEDs. Now, the cost of these AEDs are four thousand four hundred forty seven dollars and thirty cents, however, we were able to get a credit of five hundred dollars by trading in two of our not working AEDs. Which brings the total cost down to four thousand two dollars and ninety cents. I do have budgeted four thousand dollars. Obviously, the AEDs went up, so I'm two dollars and ninety cents over budget, so I just wanted to bring that to you.
If we roll to a stat.
Close, close, but only council horses. So uh that would be lined up in four ten eight zero one, and that was uh capital purchases minor. And we don't need to make that motion tonight, that can wait, I can put more details on the agenda, as I prefer to do. The third item is I wanted to bring up to the board, I'd like to purchase services through McGlocklin, the cost is four hundred dollars a year. It would be a new contract, so it doesn't fit into our reoccurring contracts, so that's why I wanted to discuss this individually. It would come out of what I do have budgeted, which is four ten four two one, which is publications. Easiest thing to do to describe McGlocklin, it's basically the tool for law enforcement that helps us do our jobs better. Our detectives are doing a fantastic job, along with our officers, and this was actually something that was brought up to me by him. And the services that they can offer, just so you know what we're getting for four hundred dollars, if the board so allows me to move forward with this. Uh they give us analytical products, which means cell tower mapping, make charts, so like, if we're investigating a crime, um we can utilize them, we get cell phone numbers, and they will do a lot of our work for them, they are actually a federal law enforcement agency, that's how they're recognized. So that's how they can do this work and share it with us. They help us spend what we tie up in a lot of man hours, they basically go to work for us. Um they give us digital forensics, what that meant there is they will provide us video enhancement, so if we get video footage or still pictures and it's not clear, we can send those pictures to them, they will enhance them for us. They try to clear up the gradiness, and maybe get us a better picture that we can then distribute to the community, and possibly solve some crimes. This might also help us with some of our cold cases out there, where videos and pictures were not that good, we can go to work and try to maybe get some, victim some restitution here. Um also, audio, you know, audio answers as well. They have a bunch of equipment they can loan us, okay, surveillance equipment, like hole cameras, things like that. When I was speaking with uh the director, the exact twenty million dollars worth of equipment is what they have, that they're willing to loan out. So it's a great resource there. They can give us financial support for investigations, that could be as simple as cash to do undercover buys on our own, pay for narcotics, or it can be cash for informants, but they will put that up, and they receive a lot of this kind of financial through grants that they write. Training, it opens up the door for our officers for some good training, and they're big in officer safety. So this is a program, McGlocklin is broken down into sectors, our sector would be Pennsylvania, New York, New Jersey, Delaware, Maryland, that. So, for example, what would be good too off the training, but like right now, we're working, our tech is working on a fraud case. Victims, two of our victims are in Robinson Township, that's why we're working it, this originates out of Maryland. So they would help us put together information we need from Maryland, law enforcement things that are out there, and save, you know, our officers countless hours of investigative work. And then, final thing that I really liked, is they had facial recognition software. So basically, they are providing us a lot of investigative tools that we cannot, you know, do our own, because we couldn't afford to buy all this.
For four hundred bucks?
Yeah, for four hundred bucks a year. Um there is a background process, they have to accept your law enforcement agency, they just don't do it because you're willing to pay four hundred bucks. That background process costs nothing, and we are currently going through it, in event that, you know, the board would approve this. So I just wanted to, like, you know, maybe wear that as well. Uh part of that process is they actually reach out and contact some local agencies that are already part of McGlocklin. Uh postal agency here, that's part of McGlocklin, is extra township. Burn Township, Canard County Township, these are some townships locally, why missing, um of course, equally is. So that's what that's about. And like I said, you don't have to make that motion this evening, that's something that can wait as well. And I'll put that back on the budget, or I'm sorry, on the agenda. And the final thing I have is I have a resolution that uh manager staff has gone up for me. This happens every year, um the Hay Creek Historical Association requests the closure of Curtis Road uh for their events. And this year's events would be for the Forty-Eighth Annual Hay Creek Festival, September sixth through the eighth, between eight and five. The Apple Festival is October twelfth through the thirteenth, from seven to five, and Christmas Exulana, December sixth through the eighth, four to nine. Um so typically, we do this by adopting a resolution, we can throw this back on the agenda if you wish, uh for Tuesday. Once the board approves it, what I do is I send a letter to the Hay Creek Historical Association, letting them know it was approved by the board. And in my letter, I also add that even though the road's closed, I need it to remain open for emergency response vehicles, fire trucks, ambulances, things like that. Just like to put that in there, so if we need a service, our residents along there, we can get the equipment through that we need, so. And that's all I had this evening, unless you have anything to say.
How about we just approve this for the Hay Creek stuff? It's one little thing, we know we're not gonna deny it.
Do you have a resolution number?
It would be resolution number zero seven. I have it listed here in my book.
Okay. Would you like to accept, make a motion for the resolution, twenty four dash zero seven, approving the road closure of Frontier for Hay Creek Valley Historic Associations, the Forty-Eighth Annual Hay Creek Festival, September sixth to the eighth, or can I just say as listing? How about as listing?
Motion, do you have a second?
My second motion.
Little person's going, Mr. Gollum?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bedlam?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Board, and I'll take care of that letter, I will also copy the board on that letter, so you, you have it as well.
Thank you.
Good, thank you, anything else to you?
Then that's all I have.
Rich, finally.
All right, in your package you'll find our monthly expenses, treasurer's report, the storage report for your review prior to our meeting on Tuesday, the regular meeting. Do you have those expenses with you?
I do, sir, they're actually back here.
Did you want to take those? Okay, uh ethics mission filing, uh we have about ninety percent of those in, I appreciate those, we've done so. If you have not already, uh just see me after meeting to confirm with me whether or not your filing is in, or whether or not I have tracking on it, uh and we'll get that wrapped up. As, as been done by Mr. Roger Bitler, they are in fact due at the beginning of May, however, we tried to get ahead of the game here a little bit with our audit coming up. And they don't necessarily tie in that, but they can if there's a question or concern. Uh the second item on here is replacing copier, uh we actually met uh yesterday, or two days ago now, with Edwards Business Systems about our current copier, it's starting to show its age, actually, end of life cycle is in June, and I will present the proposal that you received for replacement copier at May meeting. Next thing on the list is a resolution, uh it would be resolution number zero eight, if you approve it, uh that is Hazard Vulnerability Assessment Mitigation Plan. Uh this is an update to plans that we have already previously approved. This is the two thousand twenty three plan, and it is done every three years, if I'm five, I'm sorry, five years, so this is the, uh this is the plan that's currently gonna be reviewed. I sent a link, I believe, back at the middle of last month, with regard to, it's a very, very large plan, obviously not something we can include in the packet. If you not have chance to review that, we could always uh move that to our Tuesday regular meeting, but again, uh if you wanted to approve that now, that would be. Wednesday, okay? Would you like me to resend the link for that plan, so that you can review it between now and then? All right, the next one, which in this case would be zero, if you so choose, uh is a resolution authorized destruction of documents, this is from the Municipal Records Manual, I reviewed the Municipal Records Manual. We have a requirement to update our uh resolution to approve the destruction of documents. Anytime there's been a change in the Municipal Records Manual, the last one was two thousand nineteen, I did not find anything since that date indicating that there had been an update to our resolution, so I put that also on here. Uh and it's a very simple matter, just authorize us to go through it, and by that schedule, the Municipal Records Manual, straight ahead.
So we can, we can, do that resolution now?
Yes, ma'am.
And make the motion that we accept the resolution twenty four dash zero nine.
It would be zero again.
Oh, sorry, I put zero eight on the other one, it took a minute. So authorize the destruction of documents per the Municipal Records Manual.
Yeah, there's a sudden, a motion right second.
My second.
Little person's going, Mr. Rhodes? Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitler?
Yes.
As you're aware, that you had authorized last month for me to actually move forward with the destruction. Uh we do have a date set, I believe it's May thirteenth, I'll refer that with you, in event that things already move forward, then we can add that. We went through and did a, basically would be technically a triple check of our records to make sure we were in compliance with the resolution and what we're allowed to do. Uh we also took that time, since we're doing that check, we also combined boxes, the shrink, and I think we actually took uh close to almost twenty boxes over our list, so in turn, that will save some money, so we should be well within our budget and have our extra remit for them that we need. Just wondering if I didn't, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh do have an updating the advertising position, I believe you all saw my email earlier for a request for executive, uh also conscious listener discussion, I know we wanted to do both in the segment later this evening. Okay, uh the next piece on here.
Hold on one second.
Yes, sir.
You're telling me that interviews were already conducted?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And those interviews, I saw an email that she seemed somewhat apologetic, that you didn't notify us on time, is that?
I did notify you.
Yeah, we think it, and you think.
Is, is this, am I interpreting that email correctly, that we got it like at eight o'clock in the morning, and the email was, when the times were set, it doesn't seem like we had enough time to get there? Am I missing something or no?
Sir, I did offer the opportunity to get to that.
Yeah, we will, I'll try it.
Okay. The, the resumes have been circulated to us all, or no?
No, no, sir, I have those pretty early, see.
Who was that, the uh, who attended the uh, the interviews?
For the public works interviews, it was myself and Mr. Renner, and for the interviews for the administrative assistants, myself and Mr. Sheen.
So no supervisors were there?
No, sir.
There's no reason for us to be there, they need to work with these people, they need to figure out if they're gonna work in the scheme of the people who are already working there. Doesn't matter who, who you hire or how good they are, if they can't fit in with everybody, it just becomes a problem, we've already been there once. So why are you questioning the integrity or authority of them to make a decision based on who they often work with?
That's why we'll discuss in executive session, so you can see.
Is, is that really an executive session topic?
It's personnel, right?
Yes, it's personnel, Mr. Hitler, in case you've forgotten that.
I, I have a pretty good memory today.
I doubt that.
Well, I, I have a pretty good memory, I, I don't think it's proper, and I don't think, I don't think it's sufficient enough notice on the agenda just to simply regurgitate legal and personnel management. I've opposed the hiring in the past, we're not ready for that, I mean, I don't have any problem with expressing my, my, my opinion publicly.
Then why didn't you send emails?
We uh, we have, I don't think we were given enough notice, I'd like to look at resumes first, there's a, and we, we've done this.
Why take you email?
We cannot only not hire properly, we can't fire people.
All right, so a little review.
So I'm objecting to that executive session.
Personnel and private information.
Yeah, so I'm objecting to that executive session.
Okay, yes, sir. The uh, the only other piece on here for myself is the manager is uh general code discussion, I know I've sent multiple emails on this. Essentially, where we're at right now is our, our current uh proposal from General Code Services uh is, is outdated. Uh in talking with Solicitor Orlando, uh we recommended, there's a second company I'd like to look into, uh just so that we have a second quote on the table, but I believe they'll probably be very soon. Uh the idea behind General Code is, I've already made you aware, is that they put together, essentially, they take all of our code and they codify that, and they, they work through any issues or concerns that arise. Uh it's usually the period of a, a year and a half to two years, at the end of that, they present us with essentially something that is very easily searchable, online database. Uh and many of those services offer uh reciprocity, so that we can research other uh resolutions, ordinances, and other townships. Uh what I'm asking for this evening, based on the information I've already sent, uh is to approve that under our contracted services. Uh keep in mind, please, that this is not a cost that we pay upfront, uh it is sold out over time, at the most, we would be at about forty percent the first year. Uh based on that, that's around fourteen thousand uh for this current uh calendar year and, and fiscal year. And the reason for that is that it's, it's against age over time. It may not even be that full amount in this calendar year because of where we are currently, so uh it's about uh about six to nine months for the first one, and then from there, it goes forward, so.
Anyone wanna do that now, with Tuesday?
You gonna get a second, you wanna get a second one, or you, you already kinda looked in there the same?
I, I haven't gotten the second one yet, but I know that they're gonna be in the same ballpark, so I, I think the last quote we had was twenty eight thousand five hundred. Uh I've increased that slightly, just to make sure that we had room, uh again, that is good for six months, so not gonna go over thirty five total.
You wouldn't be able to have that second one by Tuesday?
I'd probably do that, sir.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
All right, then we have, anything else, Rich?
No, sir.
We have fire companies to read by year and to do that Tuesday.
Uh that, no, sir, that was actually, I brought that up already, we have that discussion downstairs.
I'm not sure I'm clear on what that means.
It was very clear on what it stated.
Ma'am, I'm not talking to you, I'm asking our manager, what does that mean?
No, you, you abused our manager.
Sir, I'm asking you what that means.
Sure, so what that means is that's a discussion over the letter you received from Mr. Orlando approximately two months ago, and I think that should be.
So we received the letter from Mr. Orlando in which he essentially resigned, correct?
He requested such, sure, yes.
Okay, I don't understand how that's an executive session, we need to essentially then find a replacement, we should have that right here in the public. We should talk about costs, we should talk about how we wanna do that process to find someone.
As a matter of the word, please use.
So why shouldn't we discuss that now? What's the harm in, in disclosing to the public what's happened?
How about?
There's no, I mean, that, no. Okay, so, so in, so in the past, when we've had uh discussions on solicitorship, we sent out kind of a request for a proposal. There were certain, in recent two years, there were certain parameters that I'd like to see in a solicitor. One of those is that they have, they have limited if any contact representing individuals on the board, or other boards. I think it's time, if Mr. Orlando's, you know, moving on, I think it's time that we kind of look outside the area and, you know, do something a, a little different.
And pay a lot more.
So, so, you know, we don't know that yet, but I, I'd like to see us, you know, stick something like we've done with request for proposals, here's how we've done this in the past. Right here, how we've hired people, both solicitors, there's no reason this shouldn't be discussed right here in front of you. And again, Mr. Orlando's rate, you know, was reasonable, and I believe the board has found his work, you know, generally acceptable. There are a few issues with which I've taken exception to him. That's, there's no doubt about that, but I'd like to, uh, you know, I'd like to make a motion. But I'd like to, uh, you know, I'd like to make a motion that we advertise, we, uh, request a proposal, and see what we get. Make that motion.
I'll second.
Sure.
Mr. Gollum?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
Not really, yes.
So that'll take that off the executive session agenda, the other items will respect to interviews and applications that you've done, is that correct?
That's correct.
And we, we can't discuss that now, what?
Personnel.
I would think it's private and intervention first at this point, I don't make any decisions on that, then, oh, we've said this before with these interviews, if someone has a job that would be affected by being brought up in public, that they could get fired from their job.
I, I didn't ask for names, I just felt it would be incumbent for us. Uh, that's not to say we don't have confidence in people interviewing per se, but as the name implies, supervisors, I certainly like to, you know, to know more. You know, more in advance, that's for sure.
Name, please.
Robert Boers, thirteen thirty-nine over the road. Had a question from what Ms. Bragstein said, you know, about when you're hiring somebody, it doesn't matter what they know, it's as long as they fit in with somebody.
No, no, no.
You're gonna hire me in the police office, sir, you wouldn't want me to have experience, would you?
No, I said. I said, if they know, if they know.
When I was, when I was, wait a second, when I was a manager, I was a manager at the Kimberly County, I would hire mechanics. I didn't care if it was a popularity contest, I wanted to know if the person could do your job.
That was already scanned, and that was already agreed on before they were ever interviewed. They had to meet certain criteria. So once that was done and they did the interview, my perspective, and so unsure it was yours when you hired people was, they had to also fit in with the people they were gonna work with. That was my point. They'd already done all those, do you have this qualification, this, 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 this? And whoever fit that moved on. So from there, it was, how does this person fit, do they think the way you need them to think, are they gonna work the way you want them? So from an HR perspective, it's the same thing that you're saying. It's just that I, we already had done that prior, so that was done previously.
Well, you had s- made that statement earlier, that it doesn't matter what they know, it matters if they hit it, and it's according to who says this.
The point, the point was, they already.
Which is part of.
But they already were done for that, though.
Maybe give us some joy, but words for discussing the individuals that's been here. So fire companies, fine.
Back up quick on the RFP thing, are we setting a deadline on that, like, post, by now, have it in for next month? And put some paper on that.
Well, I think they have a option on the date, so.
That's why I was asking, we wanna.
We can get that, we can get that set up by next month, I'm sure, and we can look at the, the one we sent out for, on hiring Mr. Orlando.
I meant just.
Now, he's stayed for.
Do I wanna have them all in?
Letters of interest, do you wanna date?
Buy the workshop for May, and then we look, try to make a decision at the regular meeting.
I, I don't think they could respond in thirty days, get them in by, you know, just workshop.
Is that something you wanna add, or?
You wanna?
Sure, I'll, I'll manage to include, you know, receipts advertising in the next seven days with a, with a requirement that they be submitted by a workshop.
The May workshop?
Yeah.
Is, uh, is that your motion for, you have to amend the original motion, so I have a second for that?
I'll second.
Hold on, Mr. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Gollum?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
Not really, yes. All right, then we, uh, packet is the beginning, it's expensive, it works, we need to change it. And, uh, Ryan Rhodes, if I may ask.
Good evening, board. Um, the first three items on my agenda were before your planning permission last week. The first of which is an NPC time extension for Old Hickory Buildings. That's a non-residential project, uh, across from the Penske Building out on Route ten, that's currently, uh, under review. Um, the second one, the planning commission recommended waivers and approval for McCarthy Ag, Ag Building, that's on five sixty-eight. That was before you, several months before this, uh, where we were fired them and then go back through the land development process. So I anticipate someone will be here before you represent that at your regular meeting. Uh, the third one, there was a waiver of the land development process received for the Bittler Law Building. Um, that was presented to the planning commission, and they did recommend approval of that waiver. That is covered, uh, the submission is covered in my report. Um, Mr. Bittler, I don't know if you wanna add anything to that for discussion tonight, it's up to the board as to if you wanna entertain that tonight, or look at it from regular meeting.
Well, obviously, uh, we abstained from voting, but the, uh, first ward addition is to connect two buildings. As Mr. Rhodes indicated, planning commission has an add as in a recommendation. I'd like to move forward as possible, as soon as possible. So I'd appreciate that waiver of my requirement to file a waiver in the final, sooner the better.
Yeah, I'd like to make that anything as soon as I can.
I'll make the motion. We approve the Bittler Law waiver of land development.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right, hold on, call Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Gollum?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
I'm staying on that vote, this is my property.
And I'll vote yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, update on the twenty-twenty-four street work, uh, contract notices of award were sent out to Norton's paving. Um, they have been in contact with me to let me know that the folks that need this time on their end have been in town, taking their last vacation before paving season hits. As soon as I receive those signed contracts, they'll be back for you for your signature. Um, we have a meeting scheduled Monday, Barry and I, to look at final scope for the paving, um, the second contract for that, which the board had authorized us to do. Um, so again, hoping to get that out on the street as well, for the. Um, Rock Hollow Road Bridge, we did have a meeting with residents, uh, after your last board meeting, held with regard to the temporary construction easements. Um, residents that were contacted had questions, rightfully so. Uh, manager, uh, Rich, myself, and, um, Phil Whitman met with them to discuss the scope of work, what's entailed. Uh, everybody seemed content after that, so I believe Solicitor Orlando's moving forward with those agreements. Um, in addition to that, uh, May twenty-third, there will be a meeting held with respect to the Old River Road Bridge. We had discussed funding, um, for bridge replacement, federal funding. There's going to be what they're calling, I believe, a scoping meeting, is that what they're calling?
I think it is, I was still, yes.
I think that's, we're scheduled for first thing on the twenty-third, so, uh, if it hasn't been yet, Rich can forward that email out to the board. Any of you that would like to attend, or if you don't need somebody to attend, um, you know, the folks from the county, uh, the engineers responsible for preparing all of this, will all be present. Again, feel a view of the bridge, take a look at, you know, what they're doing, so, um, that's kind of kickoff process for that, so just wanted to make you aware. Um, final item, there had been discussion, uh, and I know the chief was, was involved with, uh, speed restrictions on Old River Road. I did prepare a report, um, forwarded it to, uh, both the chief and manager, it is in my engineer's report, uh, basically stating what areas will qualify for that residential restriction down to twenty-five miles per hour. Um, chief, you went out and looked at it and thought that that would address the area that, uh, you had concerns.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely does.
Um, so at this point, uh, the next thing to do would be to authorize, uh, the Solicitor's Office to prepare that ordinance. Um, and that, uh, letter and report should certainly accompany that. I don't know if you wanna have any discussions on that this evening, you wanna consider it for the regular meeting?
And you have to make a motion to, uh, authorize Mr. Orlando.
I'll make that motion, I'll authorize Solicitor Orlando to start preparing that ordinance to change.
I'll second.
Roll call, Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Gollum?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
Not really, yes.
Okay, that's all that I have, unless anybody has questions from my department.
Thank you. All right, Solicitor Orlando.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the, uh, only item on our agenda are the temporary construction easements for the Rock Hollow Bridge, which Ryan just mentioned. Um, I, there was some delay from getting, uh, the, uh, one signed by the Arders Estate, but I was working with Nicole Plank, who represents that estate, and, uh, I got them, uh, it was, uh, oh, wait, and I sent copies of that to the board in an email, I forget what the day of the email is, but I think it was around the twenty-eighth of March, so that you could look at it in advance. Uh, unless the board has any questions about, uh, that, my suggestion would be in order to help keep the Rock Hollow Bridge coming, that the board wanna entertain a motion authorizing the signing of these construction easement agreements. I do have them here, signed by the property.
Do you want to make that motion?
Yeah, I think we need to make a motion to consider the construction easements for agreements for the.
Authorize the signing of.
Authorize the sign, thank you, Gene.
I'll second the motion.
Hold on, call Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Gollum?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
Not really, yes.
And that's all I have, unless the board has any questions for me. I think we're on, we are on, uh, schedule for Tuesday to consider the, uh, explosive magazine ordinance. I did receive email, which I believe I copied the board on, from Attorney Strong, who asked for a copy of the ordinance and a copy of the Park County Planning Commission letter, which I did send him. I got an email from him late this afternoon, after I had left the office, so it's on my iPhone, uh, asking me to contact him just to tell him what the public hearings, I, I don't know what his questions are, but I, I will get back to him and try to provide whatever he wants, but I think, uh, I think you're ready to go there uh, as far as, uh, entertaining the public hearing. I think we're, that'll be on the agenda Tuesday.
All right, very good, thank you. All right, and Barry, if others?
Uh, items A through C, they will be live beginning this, or next week. Um, they're supposed to be already, but we've been having some IP troubles in the office. So sending, uh, pictures and all the information over has been a little challenging. Resolution for the two thousand and twenty-five Freightliner, that'd be for the maintenance, four thirty-seven, seven forty-six. Um, that truck is also due to be here the seventeenth, after we take delivery of that truck, which will be at EM Cuts, we have ninety days to give, uh, Fennett Freightliner the check for that vehicle. After that's done, um, just in talking with Dale, we're looking, that truck probably never be until ser- in service until November, maybe December, whatever, as I said, and so. Um, they, the truck will stay over at EM Cuts, they're, we're going to periodically, as parts arrive, um, so that's where that will be.
At this point, the resolution is only to create line item for the maintenance.
Just.
So that's all it is, and there's no money attached to that at this point, again, and then we won't do anything with that until such time it actually is in our hands. Uh, however, we wanted to get ahead of the game and, and make sure there was that resolution on hand to, to create the line for us. Uh, but we'll also do that for the two, uh, two thousand twenty-three, uh, board interceptors when they come in, so you'll have separate ones for that on Tuesday. Uh, but, uh,
So we want to.
The motion to approve that, it'll be zero nine for, for the, uh, resolution.
Do you have any? Anyone like to make a resolution for two thousand twenty-four zero nine?
I made a resolution.
In our one-nine, we're considering.
A res- a resolution, yes, a resolution to create four thirty-seven point seven four six for two thousand and five Freightliner maintenance.
I'll second.
Hold on, Mr. Jordan.
Yes.
Mr. Gollum?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
Not really.
Okay, and, uh, last, E. Um, Rich and I had one quote come in from L N A, or, I'm sorry, L N H, uh, sign companies for, um, a digital sign, uh, out front, they, their quote was kind of, uh, extremely high, put it that way. Um, but as this gentleman that we sat down with explained, this is kind of like the Taj Mahal, and we neck it down from there. However, they don't start a design, a full hard design concept until, basically, you would sign on with them. Pretty much what they're saying is, their design and them designing it is not free. As well as Firewatch. Firewatch, I'm still waiting to get, hear back from them, as they're kind of like, uh, they're throughout the whole entire nation, so they have basically like a third party sign company that would come in and give us different quotes.
And do the Robson one, right?
They did, they did do the Robson one, however, she did tell me there's a little caveat to that, where Firewatch will not do any of the electronic work. So they basically put the sign up and that's it, we'd have to have an outside contractor come in and do all the electrical and all that stuff. So their quote, she, she warned me, she said, when everything is said and done, their quote is going to be quite a bit lower. However, just know that we're going to have to then also, if we do choose to go with a sign, um, their quote's gonna be a lot lower, but we're also gonna have to pay for it, an outside contractor for the electrical hookup and so forth.
In cost.
Exact.
Exactly.
Um, is the, uh, is the quotes in there?
I did not put the quotes in there, uh, at this point, if we didn't have the other one yet, at this point, I didn't feel that, but I wanted to at least get it out on the table.
I mean, if anybody would like to see, I have one here with me.
Well, yeah, so L N H Design, they, they came in, they were between fifty-five, I think it was low end, and, and sixty-one, and I understand when they, when they designed that, if you look at some of the designs they sent me afterwards, which we didn't have a chance to package for you, uh, you know, these were, you know, designs, uh, with, you know, uh, large stone walls on either side, double facing signs, uh, some of these had uh, raised lettering, and, and so there's a lot of different options to go with that. Uh, and that's what makes it a little bit harder to provide you with something more accurate, which I think was what we're looking for, until we bring that down to size, so again, we want to wait for other quote to come in, and then we'll, we'll represent that to you. But we wanted to give you just an update that we're, we're looking at it, and we're, we're on top of moving forward. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. All right, Rich?
Okay, so Park and Rec, I just wanna give you an update, uh, I actually talked to, uh, one of our, we're members from Park and Rec today, she's been out, uh, in, in the park, watching the installation of the backstop, uh, which would be going great. I don't have pictures yet, she called me right at the end of the day, uh, said it sounded like they're done, there's one gap that they need to fill. Also, we have a batting cage, uh, net from the Redding Phillies, and we're looking for something that's going to be able to, to, so we can put that up, uh, require a, a frame for, for that, so we're gonna look into that, but in the meantime, we've gotten the other piece of that done. The others are all gonna be scheduled in over the next few weeks based on weather, so, you know, we talked about the ceiling. Uh, the only one that is still on hold, which means the power washing and painted draw-up parts, so this actually covers anywhere from A to E, and I'll talk about the other two in a moment. But again, so first, playground mulch, I believe we're about two to three weeks out on that. Uh, diamond text, I think we're around the same. Backstop is in, again, there's a few things that need still finalized with that, he's gonna be out next week to do so. Power washing, painting of, uh, the buildings, again, that's something we're looking for, maybe some scout projects to help us do that, reduce the costs. And then seal coating, lime painting, I believe is weather dependent, when I spoke with Lisa that late this afternoon, she mentioned that sometime probably the next week or two, it's, again, it's weather holds, and they need a couple of days to do that, so. Uh, the next thing in there, I have a, uh, this is, I don't have it in the packet, uh, I did not realize it was in there, this is an older item, and actually goes, it, it predates my, my coming here as the assistant manager, and then manager. Uh, this was last year, we had an issue with the UV system at the park. Uh, that UV system needs to be replaced, uh, it was actually replaced, but with one that was not approved by DEP. Uh, DEP then got back to us and said you need to replace it with a model, uh, that we approve of. Uh, Mr. Ferretti did do the quote, this goes back, I believe, to sometime in September, October timeframe. That quote was for four thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-three cents. Uh, I have the information here if you'd like to look through that. One with the information from DNP, the paperwork that we need to fill out. So we do need to get that before we can open the park fully, we need to replace that UV system. Uh, much like we did out here, we replaced it, this was actually still in compliance, and we were able to do the work out here from Cole Brothers. Uh, we did check this with Cole Brothers, by the way, the cost of this UV unit, and they said that's roughly in line with what they would have also charged us for this, this particular unit and installation. Uh, so motion to approve the purchase, the replacement of this NS fifty-five UV unit from Gibraltar Park, meet the DNP requirements, uh, we really don't have any other options here, uh, there's also a fifty dollar charge we were unaware of, we just got at the end of the day, that has to go to, uh, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, basically to fill the paperwork down.
And that's included in the four thousand two hundred and twenty dollars?
Uh, it is not, sir, it would be, so that would be a total of four thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-three cents with the fifty dollar check we owe the Commonwealth.
We'll wait till Tuesday so that can be corrected on the agenda.
Will do, sir. Okay, and the last piece I have here on our Park and Rec is authorization to renew the annual erlich vegetation management agreement. Uh, total of one thousand two hundred and thirty-eight twenty-one. Uh, breakdown is as follows for their agreement, uh, Gibraltar Ball Field, uh, was four hundred fifty-four twenty-three. The Gibraltar Fence was four fifty-five twenty-six, Municipal Field was three twenty-eight seventy-two.
Anyone like to make a motion to authorize the renewal?
I have somewhat question, this is like not, if, we're not using D, we're not using anything. This is like not, we're not using D, we're not using anything evil on the fields, right?
I would, I would hope not, ma'am.
Wait a minute, I would hope not too, but.
I, I can show you the agreement that they have in place. This has been an ongoing agreement that we've had. If you'd like to review further, or you'd like me to get more information, I can do so.
I just, I didn't know what they said.
Well, you want to wait till Tuesday for that?
We can wait for Tuesday as well, if you'd like.
Can you get some more information? We'll wait for Tuesday.
It was more safety thing than anything else. Sorry about that.
Rich, you're thinking about the batting that cages. Plowbill took down the eight or 10 poles behind the firehouse.
Correct.
And they were like, well, we'll just put them somewhere. I don't, I'm going to check with that, if they didn't use them.
Okay, I appreciate that. I don't think we're aware of that.
I want you to contact if you need.
Okay, yeah, that will be great. And we can go forward with that.
All right, you're first.
I just have a question. Do we not have a row crew? I'm sorry, John Friday, 60 Grand Town Road. Do we not have a row crew person that's pesticide certified that can do a weed spring?
Not to my knowledge.
We did before, and then they're all picked up here.
They weren't, we want somebody from Parktown.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Plowbill's using that field for baseball. Plowbill is using.
Yes, they will be.
So is all the, everything's going to be done by game time? I think their first games are at 2.
Yeah, they'll be done ahead of time.
All right.
That's one of the matters I'll bring before you, exactly, to bring our, our summer out.
Anything else from Parks and Rec, Rich?
Yes, sir.
I don't know, UDC?
Nothing, not UDC.
Well, the thing for UDC was the folks that want to do the road cleanup, somehow we figure out.
Yeah, maybe we need more information on that before we go to the back though, or call.
And then the other thing is, there's the Nature Fest, the Union Township and Robinson Township, UDC organized together. It's April, Saturday, 27th.
Yes, and that's up on our website.
So that would be the only two things. All right. Any new business, Rich?
No, sir, and old business, I'll just, again, just a reminder, just to keep it on the, on the dock at the Public Works Crew Member Assistant Manager, Hometown Press, and again, we'll work that later. And Muni Links is really discussing an additional module for our on lot segment, but again, we'll push that forward.
All right, and we can go to executive session, 8:11.
Mr. Chairman, before we go into executive session, I'm not clear on whether this board is requiring me to silence the live stream. Is that the intention of this board, trying to comply with the.
That was the intent.
So you're requiring me to silence the, is that what you're saying?
Yes. And then, and we're not rushing down there, and so we can silence it and.
Well, what you're doing then is you're placing me in a position to decide between my cherished First Amendment rights and that of my duty as a sworn supervisor, an advocate for the residents of Robinson Township. Unfortunately, I'm going to have to choose the latter of those two, and under protest, clearly under protest, I'll attempt to silence that and/or terminate that, even though obviously I'm not in agreement with that. Unfortunately, I feel it's a sad day. Our freedom of speech, our First Amendment rights have been compromised, had no real benefit to this board. So I'll attempt to do that.
1339 over the road. I do have to agree with Mr. Bitler, reason because I fought for the Constitution of the United States. I took an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States, but I am using foreign domestic, obeyed the President's orders, any orders of my superiors, although they fall under uniform code of military justice, so help me God. Chief, you took the same oath when you became a police officer. I took that same oath when I worked for the Department of Justice. Now, I have exception with this board if they do not follow the Constitution of the United States.
We just ask them to be quiet so that it's not.
There's a problem with the First Amendment.
But we're.
You know, they do not.
We discussed this last night.
I said, then give it to everybody. Here's a copy of the fucking Constitution of the United States.
Excuse me, you don't have to swear.
Well, we're going to go to executive session, 8:13. Well, we're going to go to executive session 813. Chief, can you look at me down there?